Home ownership is one of the best time proven methods for creating personal wealth. And West Tennessee Bank has a mortgage plan that will help you purchase the home of your dreams. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender, Member FDIC.
We will proceed with the meeting. The next item approved amendments of January meeting. All of y'all, committee W and mail.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made second to approve of the amendments. Is any discussion in correction? If no one says aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion taken. Does anybody have a budget memo tonight? Seeing as we don't have anything. Next item is not on the agenda, but we've got a young lady here that'd like to speak to us about part graduation. It's Houston Holder, back in Florida.
Hi, my name is Houston Holder. And as class president, on behalf of the class of 2016, I would like to request a donation for Friday graduation.
And the passion goal, and the passion goal is give $500.
First chairman of the board would give the same amount this year as we did last year.
Motion made second to approve of the $500 for part graduation. Is any discussion? Now roll call tonight.
Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackthorne.
Al McKinnon.
Yes.
Decker Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malero.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Vale.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen four.
Okay, maybe that motion passed. Thank you, young lady.
Thank you.
Next item is going to be due for resolution for refinancing bonds on the jail. I sent all y'all a copy of this in from the state. I had to do that. I won't do it anyway, but I had to make sure everybody got a copy out of it. What this is going to amount to, the interest rate on this refinanced bonds now is going to go down from projected for the 445 interest rate to 2.7. That's going to save us, save the county $946,496.81. Motion made second to refinance the bonds on the jail for the savings. Is any questions? I don't know.
Is there any problem?
Just take it out of this. We're going to wind it with roughly $946,496.
What did these trends go down to?
It went from 445 to 2.7.
Is it with the same carrier or?
Same carrier, take up on it. Is anyone else question?
What is the payout on 2020?
2040. We will be here until this morning. Is anyone else questions? If, how's our roll call?
Roll call. Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Al McKinnon.
Yes.
Decker Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malero.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Vale.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen four.
All right, motion. Motion here against refinance the bond. You need anything on that tonight, C E F?
No.
Okay. I'll take more of the office and rest of the day. Thank you. Appreciate that. The next item is resolution for a C D B G grant. This is where a fire truck come in. Most of them probably got a lower insurance on the houses this past year because of the fire department out of county. Some off the end were, I think, maybe 10% to 25%. What this is for here is to buy another, approve for another fire truck. It's going to be, I've sent that to y'all again.
I make a motion with a plot of this grant.
Motion made second to approve of the, to the, applies for the C D B G grant. Once upon a twist. What that's going to be, if the fire truck is $160,000, it's going to cost us $8,029. That's pretty good weight out. Where's that going to master? Just one master.
To replace one or to?
They don't have, they don't have, they, they got them. All other fire trucks, I have, have extra trucks, except this one.
These grants are basically how we call all of them.
All our trucks.
We take these in the interest. That's pretty much how we call all of them. That's what the fire chief's been doing, trying to take the station at time, get rid of the car, and that's national. But the last, we didn't go into the truck.
We ought to, we want to have a car.
Do we have a motion second?
Yeah, we have a motion second.
Okay. Enough other questions? All in place, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, that motion taken. The next is, we've got to, for this every year, for the three star grant. We've got to tell you all that we have a county that has a file with control of the treasury. And that's about it. I don't need that to go on events that we discussed this. And I need a motion, and a second, that we approve the three star grant.
Hold on.
Our motion made second to approve this. What this does, when we have the three star grant, if we end that three star grant, our fire truck will cost us $16,000 to $8,000 to see when they get something like this, it's cut in half. Their party is. Okay, anyone else? Any further questions? If no one says aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion taken. Need to read something here too, that the audit committee mailed on Thursday, marks the 3rd, 2016, my office at 4 o'clock. Those, President John Moore, Al McKinnon, Judy Love, Barry Smith, myself, and Judy Bernard. We only had three filings this past year, which is, for us, about unheard of. All that worked was that the road supervisor had two, where it went off was the segregation of duties, and another was about three purchase orders that were written out of the facts. We've got that straightened out, I think. And also, the trust league's office had one, it was people working on the same, that's been taken care of, so I just got to give my reports, guys.
I think County County think they've had sales taken.
How many think County had?
I don't know.
More than that.
Did you?
Okay.
Which one's the cars out here?
It was.
I know. They got all this state really pushing this control controls.
Oh, yes.
We're all trapped.
Yes, we all, we all went screwing on it. Third and Friday, I guess it was, four hours worth of it. Okay, three star. The next item is going to be a resolution for the local government, local government DMA. This has not been renewed since 1951. Johnny asked me to get it renewed tonight, so the mental record was having that.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion made second to give approval to the local DMA. Is any discussion? If no one says aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion taken. The next item is going to be a little bit different. This is the last year for the clean energy grants. It had to be done, it had to be had back in February, but we didn't bring it until tonight. We went, I went ahead and sent an application in for a grant to renew the air conditioning and heat up it to, to be safe. But all y'all know for years, I think, it's cost us arm and leg for dog rated, that keep on. The estimate we've had on that, I don't think it'll be this much, this estimate, the guy's $148,000. The state will pay $64,000, and we'll be at $84,000. And you could take, I've still got most of my $100,000, y'all, if you have to buy various stuff, we can use that on there. You might take a thousand bucks if you want to.
What is the intention for the, what you're giving these?
The first bid on one is going to be like what we had. I don't know what we got. I'm two units, one for upstairs and one for downstairs. Because basically, you know, it always cooling more than upstairs. And you go where most times when one of them got a door going, it's the hot and air conditioning. That unit has to have hot water, it heats water all the time. Even in the summer, it has got hot water heating in there. I can't even show the question about what it was this morning. And I've been told, by one fellow, he said, I've been up here 30 years, and it's been like this for the whole 30 years. It should have, it should have a payback to pay that $84,000 back, probably from eight to 10 years on, on just getting your savings, not necessarily on cutting.
That unit, you know, $10,000, $20,000, which kind of like, that unit, it's never been right in my mind, probably. I can tell you, it was a child, my dad, it was a bus, he was 24 years old, believe me.
I'll also tell you, it's not guaranteed that we will get this. We got through the first phase out there as a thing, and then we pass the first grade, so this will be in. If you don't want to do it, I think put it back out. But I'm only going to entirely let it to y'all, but.
I make a motion, please, for school.
Who's that?
What are all the numbers?
This state party is $64,000, $64,000, ten to $84,000.
We could use money already.
It's already, motion made, maybe you can give me that all of them. Okay, we've got a motion second, any further discussion? Any questions? Ready to roll call?
Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Al McKinnon.
Yes.
Decker Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malero.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Vale.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seventeen four.
Good, thank y'all. The next item is going to be talking about the reappraisal. Is Morgan going to press it?
Sure. Well, 2016 marks another reappraisal year for Chester County. And tonight, we've got to pass a resolution for the next six years. But I just wanted to give you all the one thing about what's going on with the reappraisal in 2016. We reappraised over six years, so our last one was done in 2010, and I think I came before the board and gave you all a little synopsis of what reappraisal means in 2016. For the past five years, we have been looking at all the property in Chester County, looking at even houses, changes to properties, demolition of improvements on properties. We've been analyzing deeds and sales, looking at all that information, gathering all the information so that in 2016, we'll be set to change property values. The reason that we are looking at everything over the last five years is to make sure that this year, we give everyone a fair and equitable appraisal. That's what it's all about. So, in April, we're hoping, we should be sending notices out to all property owners in the county, letting them know how our values are going to be changing. And since y'all are the voices of county government, out in the community, I want y'all to be a part of all of it. This year, we're going to absolutely no help from the state at all on our reappraisal. So, everything is being done on a local basis. We're still in the process of analyzing our numbers, so we don't have all the numbers yet. We do know that our farms are going to change. Farms actually have two values. They have a market value, which is what they'll sell for between the willing buyer and willing seller, and then we have a use value, which is its green belt value. Ninety percent of the people in Chester County are enrolled in that green belt program, and it's designed to give farmers a tax break. So, the use values are not set by us on a local basis. We're looking at market, we're looking at what that property can sell for. But the state of Tennessee does set the use values on farms, and it's based on commodity prices and a lot of other things that I don't get involved in. But the maximum that green belt properties can increase each year is 6%. So, over a six-year period of time, the maximum it can go up is 36%. Some of our farms are going to go up 36%. Not all farms are going up 36% because farms are divided into whether they're row crops or whether they're pasture lands or whether they're wooded tracks. So, based on that, it will determine how much they're going up. Some 36, some maybe 15 or 20%. Now, the market is not going to go up 36%, so I think about the highest that the market is going to go is around 20. But farmers don't pay taxes on the market, they pay taxes on the, the use value. So, that's one thing that's pretty much a given, is what our farms are going to do. Our residential properties shouldn't change a lot. The economy is on the rise again, but we're getting kind of back to leveling off from where we were before. So, we may see a 1% or 2% increase on residential properties, but it won't be that much. Commercial properties are going to see some changes because in 2010, commercial properties were not touched as far as land is concerned. So, we've had, we've had some commercial vacant land sales in our county that's going to be good comps for us, so we're going to be changing some of the commercial farms. I want y'all to know that when we reappraise, values go up. But the state mandates that the tax rate come back down so that a reappraisal is not used to generate revenue. You can't use it to generate revenue. So, the state board of equalization will set what's called the certified tax rate. It must be adopted by US commissioners. But then, if you choose to change that certified tax rate, you can have advertised, public hearing, meet again, and you can vote to change it, but you must first adopt a certified tax rate that the state gives us, so that it not generate revenue. Now, does that mean that everybody's taxes will stay the same? No, because properties go up at different rates. Farms are going to go up some, commercial properties are going to go up some, residential properties may stay, be about flat. So, as you can see, some people will pay more in taxes, but not everybody across the border. Y'all are about to vote on a resolution approving the next six-year reappraisal, which will be in 2022. But before y'all did that, I just wanted to give you a little update on what's going on in 2016. And again, the notices will be mailed out probably in April, could be the first of May. In a normal year, they're usually mailed out about the middle of May, but the calls, it's a little more lengthy process during reappraisal. We have to give everybody in the county a chance to come into our office and tell us what they think about the reappraisal. And sometimes that's spread out over several weeks during the time, so we try to get those notices out beforehand, so that they can do that. But that's just a little information on the reappraisal. Y'all have questions, feel free to ask me.
On the farm, you were saying it could go up 6% a year for six years, but it may not be that much, and it's based on, you know, based on market prices or market.
Exactly. It's based on commodity prices and market prices, and there's some other things thrown into the mix. The green belt values are something that's wrapped out with Farm Bureau and some other agencies. It's not anything that way as property assessors set at all.
Actually, it's farming markets.
Yes, yes, yes. And that's all done out of national, it's not done here locally. They send it to me, say, here's what it's got to be. I can't away from those values for green belts. And the most that it can ever increase in a six-year reappraisal would be a total of 36%. That's 6% each year. It can never exceed that. That's in statute that says cannot exceed that 36%. Now, does that mean it has to go up 36%? No. And I've already received those numbers from national. Some of the farm types are going to go up the maximum of the 36%. Others are not. Some of them are only going to go up 10%. But crockland is going to go up 36%. Pasture lands are going to go up 11% to 16%, and then wooded tracks anywhere from 10% to 20%. So, it varies based on the types of land that's out there.
But they are saying that farming.
From what I have received, the numbers that should be the final numbers from the state of Tennessee, and yes, the crockland is going to go up by 36%.
What percent of Chester County is crockland?
That's a good question, Nelson. And I don't know.
We're a rural county and, all right, now you said that the tax, they would bring that back down because it's not money making for.
Exactly, exactly. That's another thing that is set by state of Tennessee. State board of equalization will look to see how much we increase property values in our county, and they will calculate a tax rate so that it generates the same amount of revenue as was generated last year. So, if that $100,000 house generated $100 in taxes this year, that $120,000 house should generate $100 in taxes this year.
So, as far as the county revenue, it should balance out. If they lower the taxing, we should get their appraisal rate, right, a rate?
The tax base should be about the same. Now, Judy and I will both agree that that never happens. And it's supposed to. It's supposed to happen, but somehow, our new construction kind of gets lost in those numbers.
Our growth, you know, something gets absorbed somehow, you know, I can't figure that.
So, it never comes out by itself. But that's what they tell us, that's what statute says, it's not supposed to be used to generate revenue, but it's not always.
So, you've got to have a little growth in there, you've got to adjust for growth.
And I think that growth is lost.
That's what you're saying, it gets lost.
It gets lost in there, yeah, because the growth should be additional, I mean.
The growth should be additional.
Right, right.
Should get, get based on the same amount of structures you had in the previous year, but you're going to have more structures this year.
Exactly.
So, you have, you need to get a increase because of the destruction.
Right, for that growth. And now that you've mentioned that, Barry, in 2015, we had 48 new homes built in Chester County, one new duplex built in Chester County, and five new commercial properties built in Chester County. That was in 2010.
That should take care of inflation for us in the tax bill.
But Judy and I both have seen that somehow, all of that growth doesn't show up as growth when they figure the certified.
When they get the certified rate, they don't add that in.
Not all of it, some, I don't know where it disappears to, but it's not always.
It gets absorbed somewhere.
Right.
Right.
But I think 2016, of course, we can't use 2016 numbers for reappraisal, but 2016, we're on track for more construction. We've gone, several new subdivisions that are opening up, a lot of new construction that's going on right now, a lot of dry land, a lot of year completions. I think we're going to see an increase in our numbers of new homes over the 2016 year. To have 48 is pretty good. I was looking back at some of our numbers in years past. Up until 2009, we were averaging 75 to 85 new houses a year. And then, I'm thinking in 2010, 11, and 12, we were down to maybe 40, 30 or 40, something like that, new houses. So, we're back up, the trend is going back up, but we're not back up to where it wasn't really.
Whenever you first started, you might comment that this time, you're not getting any help from state on reappraisal, why is that?
Because the state has been trying to wean the counties off of help for reappraisal over the last several years. In 2010, they told me to be prepared in 2016 to have very little support from them for reappraisal. That's one reason. Another reason is the state changed its appraisal computer system. And I chose not to go with the state's system because there were better products out there, much better products that would make our jobs easier and allow more accuracy for what we do in the county. And because I did not choose the state's own company and vendor, they don't like me as much, so they are giving me less help because of that.
I knew, I noticed on the Tennessee property data assessment page, we're not in the state anymore, you have to go down here and find Chester County somewhere else, actually look up, because I get on the side every day or something. And I noticed that, so I was kind of.
They kind of swooped on it.
I don't know where that come in.
Right.
What, what made the decision, did I ask persons for reappraisal?
When I chose to go with the other vendor, they shut off my email, which was a state email address. They shut off my email address, they shut off our website, they shut off most of the support from, from the state to me. Actually, I had to go before the state board of equalization and Conktraller, Wilson, and several other on board to tell them why I was going with another vendor. Chester County's being picked up really because we chose not to go with their user product.
Are you saving money?
Yes.
How many in-house employees are you using to reappraise the house in Tennessee since the state's?
My same staff that I have, and there was a retired employee from the Jackson DPA office who was coming down just to help through the reappraisal, and he's working just on a part-time basis.
That money comes out of your budget?
Yes, 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 it comes out of my budget. He was here like two, it varies, two days one week, three days one week, just whenever I run into things that I feel like I need to have a little number of their support. So, he retired from the state, and he's come down. But other than that, we're doing it with the staff that we all have. Anyone else?
Yeah, question?
Carol, pretty. Well, I want to ask you, if you were talking about the assessment to be made, the crockland will be different, pasture land will be different. How do you all go about, say you've got pasture land and you're going to start cropping, and, or you've got woodland and you're going to clear some of it? How do you determine that? How do you assess that? How many acres you've got of? How do you arrive at, how much crockland you got, how much measured in you've got, or how do you do that?
Back in the 1960s, our county was soil mowed, and it's based on what the soil is best suited for. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have cows on it, or that you're growing soybeans on it. It's based on those soil types that were developed back in the 60s, whenever they drew all that up. We have land grave mowers, and you can look at them and know that some of it is now being row cropped, but the soil is best suited for pasture land. So, that's how we come up with that, Carol, it's just based on those, those soil mowers that we've got. So that's how we come up with that, Carol. It's, it's just based on those, those soil maps that we've got. Um, now, if, if it is best suited for growing trees and they've gone in and they've clear cut it, completely clear cut it, cleaned it, and, um, now they're farming it, we make an adjustment for that because tree land is the cheapest land that you can have in, I guess, in Tennessee. The, the price per acre, the way it's calculated in our office is the cheapest. Um, but, because we're, we are appraising dirt. We're not appraising the trees. We're appraising the dirt. But if they have clear cut it and changed it into pasture land or crockland and they've truly, completely cleared it, stumps, everything, then we may adjust it into like pasture land in a poor category or a better soil for trees. So we do have a little adjusting in there, but for the most part, it's from those soil maps.
Thank you. And one other question ahead. On, uh, appraisals, how much does it affect your appraisal of your property? Uh, say you build a new structure, do you build a new barn, you build new sheds? Uh, does that automatically raise your?
I feel that we're going to show up. Um, it, I think the values vary. Uh, it's usually, if, if you hire somebody to come out and build that building for you, you hire all the work done. You don't go out and do it all yourself, but you hire it all done. It's usually going to be around the cost of building. Around the cost of building. But now, if you go out and build it yourself and all you've done is gone and bought the lumber for it, you've got to consider how much was your labor worth? And you've got to add that into it because we're going to add that into it whenever we're appraising it. And, you know, there's different variables in the shop. If you've got electricity to it, if it's got a concrete floor, if it's got water to it, those type of things change the value of it as well. If it's just a pole barn, like farmers are building just these pole barns that's dirt, they're putting hay up underneath it, that would not be anywhere near as much as an enclosed farm shop with concrete floor with electricity. That's where it could be.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, the next item is going to be to approve the resolution regarding a continuous six-year appraisal cycle. What can make say to be of approval to the resolution regarding a six-year appraisal cycle? Any questions on that? If not, and say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion to adjourn. Next item is consider changing the property maintenance code. There's things in this that Sheriff Whitaker assembled, went over, a lot of things that we hardly enforce. We apologize to events late back in this hour. We were supposed to meet with the attorney the day after the COVID happened. For a lot of, all that day, we, we, we just kept a lot of things in there. Anyway, uh, the main thing we did was take out the cars, the vehicles. Uh, we added in there, that was not in there to start with, we added in there fifty dollars a day. Fine. Now, when, when they go out, they give out a ticket for not starting fresh, already got me picked out. I think I told you. If it's fifty dollars, if you don't get off that day, the next day could be fifty dollars if you make that. It was fifty dollars a day until they get cleaned up. The other way it was, we could, we could, we could put a, a, a lien on the property. But I wouldn't work with you then, have a bunch of liens because I've got seven grand kids and I got two, three, four, I could give it out that way and just keep changing names on, on the property, which you're going to stay, so you're going to have lien. And this way, it gives a little teeth about trying to get people to get their stuff cleaned up. That's what I picked off that one. Yeah, well, that's a match made. That's a match for law. We can go.
What, what about, what kind of changes would play, are you referring to, that and vehicles on the piece of property?
Any kind of vehicles, uh, 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 Mr. Richardson, we're, we're running the problem. Like the back here, we've got a place out close to us, it's a junkyard. We've got a neighbor that's got antique tractors, it's an engine yard. If you do something to this guy, Phil has got the, the junkyard. You've got to do something to the guy that's got the antique tractor. You've got to keep it even. So that's why we took that out. It was to protect him. He could enforce that. I mean, he could, but I think it's going to be, it'd be a mess to try to.
The, the thing, the thing that we have to keep in mind and forward too is share that all kinds of certain things. This, this is something that of course is something that's going to be ever evolving and ever changing.
Exactly.
And at this point, until now, we haven't done it.
Right.
We need to start something and then we can lead on off. But at the end of the day, we've got to have something reasonable that's enforceable, not something that's not reasonable that we can't. You know, this, this policy may not be perfect in all aspects, but it's, it's a start. Like you said, it gives us a team to go out and start trying to do something. Before this, we couldn't do anything.
Right.
At this point, maybe we'll do something. And that is, I, I think I and some other people's on the committee. And, you know, if something's, we can, we have to share it with lawyers and all of it. Maybe we can ask stuff.
Make some changes.
At this point, we, we've got to get to work and try to do something.
We should, we should have already had a call up at the point this, things came up because you just didn't get that. Sheriff Whitaker was tied up. Matter of fact, I know you did what you meant to go, but I didn't because I didn't.
We will afford what's in this document.
Sir?
We will afford what's in this document.
Yeah, I, I, you're not discussing a couple of things I've got to have.
Something for.
From other, other departments, but anything we do on our own, we will support this, this, this.
An individual whose wife has been trying to correct behaviors, working to be in correctional relationships. Always better to have three rules you enforce. It's fifty, nine, ten.
Right. Okay, do you have any questions? If not, I hear both, we, we accept this need to revise, uh, maintenance code.
Sure.
What can make say will approve to the, uh, like revise maintenance code? Is any further discussion? If not, and say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion to adjourn. Uh, Mr. Nancy?
Yes. I have brought weekend, uh, into the library going about that Dr. Blingford. And, uh, I think Dr. Doc's-
Yeah, girl.
Also, and Daniel was about to before this morning, David's passing out the new flowers. They are, they're, um, and, um, circulation report. And, um, also giving you this, I, I know I mailed you all a budget estimate. This is for Randy, uh, McKinnon had written on, uh, last night. Randy and I kept playing telephone calls once we were both out of line. This is actually the revised budget, this, the one I sent you was not the right one, and I apologize for that, that is my fault. But it was money than, um, the one I sent, so I'm gonna let Dr. Blennington have a look.
Thank you, uh, as Nancy mentioned, we are here as directors of the library. I'm here in place of Chairman Penimore, who is out in the county on school business, as my name is. Uh, and, uh, my relationship with the library actually goes back all the way to the sixties when Miss Lucille had the, uh, the library in the upper floor of the old city hall. And, uh, as many of you know, our library, uh, and its use is out proportionally to the size of our county. Although we're one of the smaller counties, it's one of the more highly utilized, uh, facilities in our entire state. And if there's all agents and all socioeconomic, uh, groups here in the county, uh, we are running out of space. Uh, when I was out there today, every computer was in use, there were very few places to sit, and, uh, we basically have no more shelf space for books. Uh, at your request, we have come back to you with some new figures. Uh, the total expense of the new facility, uh, has redesigned by Randy McKinnon. And by the way, he has done all of this for us and for our county at no cost, so we, we're not out any ardent footfalls for the work that he has done. But the entire project now comes in just under three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this gives us more book space, it gives us more seating space, and, uh, of course, we're asking not only you, but we're also asking the city. And we will be applying for one of three grants that's available here in the state for, for library additions. Each of these grants is a hundred thousand dollars, and of course, we will be applying for that. But we have no assurance that we're gonna get that, so we're coming to both you and to the city to try and get the funding for this project. Uh, as you can see on the list where the, the monies are talked about, we have pulled out a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the project that we will take on as either work that we will do ourselves or things that we will be responsible for ourselves. We have a building fund of about thirty thousand dollar, dollars, we have CDs that are about twenty eight thousand dollars. Our recent five K raise, uh, raised four thousand dollars. So we have some funds available, including one anonymous two hundred and fifty dollar donation every month. But this, of course, is just barely even, uh, going to be, uh, funds that we can use for our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, part of construction. So we hope that you will consider, uh, these new monies, uh, and, and the lesser costs for this, uh, revised facility. And also, we want to make aware of two or three other just general maintenance problems that we're having. We've got carpet there that is now seventeen years old. We've got two humidifiers running pretty much all the time, especially in the summer, uh, constantly, every day. And, uh, we have a roof and foyer that begins to leak. So these are some just general maintenance things that need to be addressed in addition to the, uh, the addition of what we've been putting up.
Basically, what, what you're saying, because you've got a place, one building, place, basically, what, what you're saying is that at the end of the day, y'all need two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand?
That's right, that's right.
You provide for Grant for a hundred thousand.
We cannot, we cannot offer anything until they know what lengths they're willing to give.
And y'all, y'all have personal secrets?
Yes.
We spoke, I spoke to Mayor King last week, he said that he would give something for his people all night, see, he might say constantly that this is a county building and, uh, city residents on the American Department of the County, he said that he would contribute something, and it's like, what? And he doesn't understand why I know it, he doesn't know.
My, my only thing, and I'm not talking against you, don't get me wrong, that building, uh, you got water, water on that floor. I first liked it, but I'm a little campy, you know, it was just this.
And we're talking to the officers.
And I thought, like, it's a go, it is, it's, it's secret, I don't know.
The water sink jam should have come in through the roof.
Well, the roof, the roof leaks in the foyer.
Oh, wow.
Uh, it kind of saves up a little bit, or it's, there's a lot of moisture in the, uh, in the foyer, the top of the tiles. And we have pretty good isolated couple of incident where we count that maybe run. Um, I don't know that it leaked that much, actually, on Thursday, I wasn't there on Thursday, but I, I didn't get any calls about that. Um, so there's, something's gonna have to be done one way or another.
So Nancy, if you've got any other contractors, does it take a, a little architect or?
I have not, it's kind of hard to think somebody who's prepared for Horizon. Um, I have, um, seen, you know, talked about it in the past, it's past summer, but I don't think they would do anything like this for nothing. And Randy can tell us what that is.
That was all they done after I'm paying for that. You got a full picture of soft cost and you're thirty-five thousand dollars, that's what they get. That's soft cost.
So basically, we can't move far with a grant or a seed company, they might not want it.
That's a little lost. You're saving three hundred thousand dollars, what's the other thing to do that?
The one at the bottom of the page, phase two.
Uh-huh.
That's what we said that, you know, that's not something that we have to be included right away, that's something that we can probably raise money for. Um, we can, you know, we can even volunteer to do some painting. Uh, Chairman Penimore is loves paint, and he has volunteered all of us to do that, because, you know, we're gonna have to close the library at some point to get a lot of this filling. So we're trying to make it look more attractive through all funding.
So that phase two is what we in the library would hold.
Yeah.
That's not certified, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Yeah.
What was that? I can't remember, the first is what they, they come in.
It was close to, um, but it was a lot more ready too, and it was very attractive.
Yes, sir, could, could I, could I ask you a question, uh, in order? Uh, you're, you're familiar with the Woodville Hospital area, and what we call the.
Sorry, that's not the only city in town.
Let me ask you, and with all your perspective, your position, thanks for what you've done with this library over the years. What, what we to prove, having been a dog here, like, what is that gonna do for that child, uh, struggling just to get through the hospital?
Well, for instance, uh, probably one of your constituents right now, we have the Soliton area. Uh, I know the home right now, he's checking out a hotspot, which is something that we have just, I've got it in the, uh, newsletter. Uh, that we have contracted with Horizon to do, it's a little device, plug in and you have the internet. And we've got a portal right now, uh, I have asked the Club Foundation about paying for that, I do not, because it's a monthly fee, I don't think I will, and I'm not heard from them, not for a month. But that's one of the things that, uh, our library does, the only thing is, I mean, you know, our, our, our catalog is online, for some, again, when you're out there, you don't always have good internet to pick up, but I'm pretty much getting our bathrooms for still children, I live in the schools all the time, in that, near the cross American way, I think there were five hundred, at least, just kids, students that were ready to, uh, school like me and Chris still. Five of them, uh, I read some of Dr. Schles, I probably shoot us. Um, but, you know, though, there is a world of stuff in the library, if we don't have it, I can get it from another library. There's lots of things we can do, they're great, and somebody has to bring that child to town. But, you know, if you value your children and their education, you will get them for them to be done. And we are opening in the evenings, our partners used to say that we're open on Saturdays, uh, until twelve o'clock. So we do try and make, uh, the library accessible to everybody. So, and that's the best, the best answer I can give you, I would.
Or the first company bid on this girl?
No one has bid on it, that's just the architects. Well, I mean, there's no way we can let out business when we know we're just gonna be nothing about it.
That's that. Looks like we can get bid on it.
Um.
With the specification thing, you gotta drop it. Like, carry grass and leaves and stuff like that.
Well, I'm gonna make sure that y'all were gonna be willing to fund this.
Nancy, we, we ran into a little difficulty with city sidewalks on, is, they had tremendous open blocks, so I think that's gonna be a lot of commissioners', uh, thought processes, uh, on, on. Kind of like I got the Ford concrete one time, the judge told me it wasn't really an estimate. We're gonna have to have, in some way, have it solid, you know, can't, can't run three hundred thousand and four hundred people thousand just because they didn't, you know, rent the sidewalks up.
Well, I mean, I wasn't really expecting, we're not, and definitely not on this tonight, I mean, uh, I think except for budget here, this is something I'm gonna react to, like I'm talking to Randy about, and we can say, uh, you know, we wanna get bids on it, um, but.
Would you grant, you'd grant on how much we'd receive?
Yes, I will, uh, I will not, I'm talking to Cheryl, who is the, I logged her in, and she said I will, I will go, but he has to settle with her.
We have to decide.
Yeah.
So, so what, maybe we're two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, you can take, you say three hundred thousand dollars. We gave a hundred, city gave a hundred, y'all got a hundred, we'll just, we'll just maybe give a hundred of that.
Well, I mean, there's only three grants, it is competitive, and they, you know, new construction, those cars, and then additions second, and so, yeah, I mean, we got one, though. So, and, you know, I'm good at new construction over here, and I'm very helpful, thank you very much.
I really have a problem doing this, I don't wanna do it like that, but we do start with budget.
Should I pick a building?
That's your war.
It is just seven thousand five hundred square feet.
All right, this expansion, does that go all the way to the curb?
No, they don't go all the way. The other one, three, close to the curb, of course, that one.
Well, I, I, I agree with the mayor, I, I'm not, I'm not against the project at all, and I think, you know, you know, here we are, being a bar, we can't, we can't, you know, that kind of move it back. What I would like to see is, is, and y'all have heard the board, and I can be, is, is maybe the mayor, the one that was the budget committee, we can schedule that, y'all come in between now and then. Anybody else, you can come up with any more supporting documents, any more causes, with any more places you can trade for hundreds or two hundred dollars here, wherever you can, just come up with that and meet with us at the budget committee one day. Now, keep in mind, the budget committee is just that, it's just a committee. We can recommend all day long to not do the project, and if people sitting around me can go along with our recommendation, like, and choose that. But me being on the budget committee, me being someone in favor of this, that's what I would like to see there, again, on the first.
How much worth?
When, when would that be?
Probably sometime, mid-April.
Long way. April, I. How much worth, thirty-eight to fifty-nine?
I could have told you, I, I didn't even think about that.
It looks like about fourteen to fifteen.
Well, I think it's about fourteen.
Fourteen hundred.
What it looks like, it's thirteen. It's twenty-six to fifty. Anyway, that's about thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred.
This is taking the roof off, but you roof off to, or what?
Because at one point, we were talking about, we were, yeah.
No, no, it's not, it's not, no, that was on the low.
Yeah.
That's how you cut it down?
Yeah. Yeah, really, I mean, we, that's pretty much where, but, you know, I mean, for Rob, when we built this building, I think we had a limited funding before we let it sell. Uh, I mean, I think, like I said, I could talk to Randy tomorrow, and we could say, you know, what to do, as far as that goes. Uh, we'd be happy to, with the budget committee, and, um, anyone that's retired, and I'm not too tired there, y'all, y'all would hate when we get ready, but.
Mr. Pope, for retired, this.
I would welcome the bliss they got.
Oh, well, you have to catch the crawfish, I'll have you pay.
I give you some chance.
Well, there's one thing for sure, if the roof is leaking, we gotta get it fixed regardless.
Yeah.
Because you can't, you can't have water coming through that way.
Well, and it's, it's not terrible, but, uh, you know, the way it was a couple weeks ago, I would hate for somebody.
Well, you know, the next time, it may be on top of computers or what, who knows? With the support of, I've, no, we're not ready to, of this, this election, I'd love to do some pledge, but I'd just like to say that I appreciate the library, and the house, and the child. I don't know how many people still have a library card, just dangers. And I had one, so probably about a four-year-old. I've been up to the same one, you went to, up at the old city hall, top, you know, Main Street. That's where I learned to read largely, and saying that, uh, I just wonder how much the school system appreciates library?
We do, we maintain a library every campus we have.
Well, it's, we've been talking on that, it's a big issue, but, uh, but now, we, we have a great relationship with this building. I have, I always say I speak to the teachers, and the first aid and service agent here in county line in front, and I always tell them, we all have one of those little partners in education signs out there, but I feel like my partners is really well in my fit. I spent, uh, two weeks ago, I spent most of my time going to the neon process to bring the children, and I'm going to Westchester, and I, to reap our following, to do like something, I, I, I can be there, occasionally.
You did okay with y'all, and for us, the committee to meet and talk about this later and later date. I, I, I think all options agreed that it's something we'd like to do. We're gonna get it done.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of getting all around, what about if you get some bids between now and the budget committee? And then that would be more, you know, yeah.
If we take, if we, if we tell, we take, if we want. It's starting April, right?
Okay. Um.
It was May, actually. But, but replace alone, oh, you know, can I add some figures, when this, like, they, they?
Certainly, I'd tag trade, probably being in the.
Right, okay, and basically, right, you?
I do want to thank, uh, Commissioner Smith, the Commissioner Smith, uh, for being at the race, uh, a couple weeks ago, that I see the nice, you know, I really do appreciate it. And I did get a call from Alvin and Sid, telling me that the Alvin and the Clumsy were here because they were, uh, meeting in Jackson, where they're gonna be all this time, but I do appreciate that, it's gorgeous. We got lots of sponsors this time, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, uh, before, it's, I have a question, uh, before we go. Um, is it gonna be in the minutes that we will be able to make an appointment? Is that gonna be included in the minutes, like some could have?
Mayor, I, I'll make a formal motion that, that we table this to the budget committee for some time, so, I'll make that motion.
Say that again. Word forward.
Thank you.
All right, I would like to say aye?
Aye.
Oh, no, okay. Next, to, in the business of full commission, anyone having that one right now?
Hi there. I would just want to have to say thank you to everybody that's here for the support, that we see, particularly, there were no, maybe with Mayor, back in the fall, the day we, and there's no way we start paying for the king, helping donate a lot of things, Lance and Danny were there nearly every day, I believe, helping with food and trash. And this John Ream, security, donated buses, transport, the bottle to the back porch, and, and Richard Bell got us a tent, and a camp with everybody, see, and, and it was just unbelievable support, and I appreciate that, and we, yeah.
Ladies, we appreciate your efforts, too. Regardless of what they've put in.
I just got one thing, and I asked you, no, I'm. I'm there in four, two dollars. I've got, he taught me, like, in the first day, he did, uh, I'm probably way three, but I was told by three of them, so I'm, you say I'm big?
Speaking to the state, please.
I'm being told by three of the people, I'm neither way that, I buy three tubs, eat truck, be in much, it's full of trucks. Then it becomes a lot, I might get three, I might get four, but I get y'all permission, right, and build this purpose off, on this.
You have a lot of any questions?
Well, I just want to, one this purpose, pay so much down, I think so. We, we got a grant, I'll pay it off back in December, I won't regret it, do that one and a half, pay it. Get this something, I have to tell permission.
And, and, and I, and this is something I spoke to you about, I think whenever, whenever you gave us the, the January equipment, I was shocked to see that a lot of equipment was open as one was.
Are you telling me you're not?
Chairman, is true, we're still getting an extra money from the state with the highways, is that, is that true?
Not yet.
I mean, it's still, it's still forecast, so the people get.
Well, it's all, no, it's not.
No. They keep it right, 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 they, they would give.
I thought it, I thought it was definitely, no. We're back in one tonight, we're back.
Good work.
Good work. One for that, right, yeah. Thank you, Washington.
If they would give us our part of that, it's similar to something that was up to.
Yeah, how they, how they calculate how much each county would get now, you know, where'd they get that figure?
It was, the money, one started a whole thing years ago, they take two hundred and fifty million dollars out of the highway fund and put it in the general fund of the state.
Right.
And never have given that back, they just talk about giving, I'll be good, that, that back, then divide out amongst the counties. And the size of the county, the road miles, the way I was saying, road miles, it's what's going, this time, it's money you get back.
I'd like to mostly improve it, but.
Exactly. Motion, exactly, uh, give, uh, uh, question, I would do a request, first, next question, four drugs, three more drugs. Is there any discussion? If, uh, the flag say aye?
Aye.
Oh, no, motion here. Thank you. Did I leave something out, uh?
Uh, you forgot to discuss, uh, permission to grade my name first.
No, we didn't, we didn't, I haven't.
We got it, yeah.
Yeah, but that is not gonna work, and I'm like, anyway, we're still working on that. Stay good, we have a lot.
Play on.
Okay.
I'm trying to be brief, and I'm home and play, so.
I want to call the, uh, county officials who did not, who, who did get a clear audit this time, uh, that's incredibly hard thing to do. Uh, I'm embarrassed to say that I'm not one of those that got a clear audit, I have in the past, that doesn't matter this year, but I owe it to the commissioners, I owe it to the, the public, and at least to my staff, who work very hard and are very dedicated, very dedicated. To let you know that finding, um, I can't remember now, but, but it's something to say that employees work out of each other's drawer. I'm the employee that they're talking about, each of, I have two member, uh, two faculty, uh, one full-time, one part-time. They each have their own drawer they work out of, they don't touch the other person's drawer, um, we can lock it, put behind fifteen locks all day long, uh, we don't need to do that. We, we trust each other, we're a family, we're a team. Uh, audit doesn't see that, but audit sees fraud and theft all the time. So they don't see that I'm the, the, uh, officer, and that the buck stops here, so, uh, they have a problem with me working out the drawers when, when one of the ladies is going to lunch, I may sit at their desk and take the tax money. Uh, that's pretty much the extent of the issue, just didn't want anybody to be concerned that, uh, that it was less than more than that. Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
I got, I'm thinking about the three-star divide, I'm not gonna say that, that's gonna be the minute.
Yeah, fair play.
This, okay, make sure to leave a thing out now, before we get out of here. Does anyone else have anything that I can write up? Yes, I'm here, both of you, charge, what, charge, did, I charged you?
Yes, sir, we have, uh, you, uh, Mr. Kimberly, the foreman, Mary Wayne Fandren, and Lawrence, and Lori Goff.
Bless your name, the charges.
Sir. What do you make sake for charge, did you, did you? What do you make sake for charge, did you, for this? All the players say aye?
Aye.
There you go, what's with your charge?
No, no.
All the players stand there.